Industrial yellow or crosshatchings and they might not allow it, but are we going to attempt to ask that?
No, that is not on my scope of work.
Even though we discussed it and Bill Rourke said that that was possible?
He didn't.
Well, that's something we've got to circle back around with, um, with Bill. We've not done that since, what was that, Thursday afternines, Public Works Committee meeting? So that, that's something we have to follow up on with Bill.
But Bill Rourke was not talking about this crosswalk. We were not, we were not talking about this Thursday.
That was all median work.
Well, I thought we were just discussing in general the painting and if everything else is going to be painted. I was just referring to the painting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because we're talking about the, the color.
Right.
But the painting was the medium from Little John to the roundabout is what you were discussing painting because that would be painted permanently if we don't put a medium there. What this is, is permanent. When we build it, it will be permanent.
At, at, at the bump out, but the bits that are-
Between now and next year when it's paved, it'll be painted just temporary.
Except-
And he, Bill, Bill Rourke didn't talk about this.
Well, I was, I, I guess I thought he was because as the manager just said, the corner, the hatching on the corner where Granville Insurance is and the hatching on the corner where SunTrust is and the hatching, um, on the corner where Granville Health System is, all those are being added. So, so to me that was painting and that's what I was thinking. That anything that-
And that would be painted permanently when we resurface.
Yeah, I mean, that's only going to be paint anyway.
Right. So if we could make it look nicer, that, that was my point.
That's what he talked about.
Right. That's all. Then if we could, if we could make it look nicer, if we could have permission to make it look nicer, and they might not give it, but if, if we could have permission to make it look nicer, I think it would just continue to add to all of these great things that we're doing in the downtown. Thank you. Um, okay, going on. Item C, consider authorizing staff to proceed with discussions with the Division of Water Infrastructure, which is the funding source for the 2018 water and sewer projects and NCDOT to implement the medians in their respective projects and to authorize staff and McGill to proceed with determining cost and feasibility of adding to the NCDOT resurfacing project. This revised painting schematic matches the downtown master plan. So you've got that in attachment 4C. And again, lots of, uh, good graphic information that was probably a little bit harder to see on, um, uh, during our, our meetings last week. And there is also in here what Danny was just referring to with the rotary and the painting on that further section of Main Street. Does anybody have any questions on this item at this time? Okay. Item D, consider executing an on-call engineering services master agreement. And I believe you've got in red in your agenda that, uh, staff is in the process of reviewing the firms now. And so this item with respect to the narrative should be more complete by next Tuesday. But at this point, does anybody have any questions for Amy or the manager?
One question regarding exactly where this will take place. What, what area are we referring to? It says, um, what, one, what 12,500 lineal feet?
Oh, are we, are you going back, um, Commissioner to item C?
No, I thought it was in the-
On the, on the engineering, are you on the engineering services master agreement?
Well, it, well, I wrote here in one of my notes, it says, location of exhibit A, it says Norfolk Southern, page one of the engineering services.
Okay. I, I did not see that. If you can pull us to, so you're on page one of the engineering services agreement?
Well, maybe I'm too early.
Yeah, I mean, attachment 4D is where we're at and it's, it's pretty much a one page.
Yeah. Um, I'm too early.
Okay. Yeah, I think you might be attachment 4E.
Yeah.
Okay. Any, any questions on item 4D? Okay. Now we will move forward to 4E. Commissioner, consider authorizing the city manager and staff to finalize a task order with, and that's in the blank, to proceed with the wastewater treatment plant rehabilitation project. So we were rewarded $6 million and change by DWI for the wastewater treatment plant rehab project. And they're working on selecting from the newly selected on-call firms to proceed with the design permitting and construction. So with that, Commissioner Gilreath, we go to attachment 4E. And am I correct, on the backside of that page is where you are and you're looking at the bolded area that is underlined? Is that correct? In the top third of the page?
No, it's actually exhibit A with engineering services. Looks like page one of that is the end of, so is the end of where you are. It says exhibit A consisting of blank pages referred to.
So we're on 4A or E or F or what?
Yeah, I, I think Commissioner Gilreath is into the, uh, agreement with the Wooton Company for the USDA project.
Yes, that's exactly.
Okay, that, that's the next item.
Okay. I apologize. I apologize. I saw on this, uh, with the-
Yeah, they have similar page numbers.
Um. Four, so it's not under 4F?
No, it's, it is under 4F, but we're still on 4E.
Oh, I apologize. It getting a little confused here. I apologize.
We're on the wastewater treatment plant project funding.
You're right. Okay. And there actually isn't an attachment for that, I think. Um, so does anybody have, I, I'm so sorry, everybody. Do you have any questions on this item? Okay. Then we move forward to the item that Commissioner Gilreath has a question on. And please forgive my, I, my confusion. I apologize.
I'm sorry, Jackie.
That's okay. So you tell us where you are so you can get your question answered.
I am, um, well, according to this, it looks like page one. And it says engineer services at the top. And there's some language there that talks about Norfolk Southern. Um, and I was just curious where, where we're, where, where we're talking about. It says-
Amy, want to click in for that one?
Where are you, Teresa?
Say that again?
Where are you? Which page?
Well, the, what, the page number is one, but it, it's after page 20. And then it goes, I'm assuming it goes to page one because the next page says page two.
Attachment 4F.
Right. But, but it's a, it's a big, long document.
Yeah, it is. I, I got it now. The, um, the agreement is what you're seeing first. And the agreement between the owner and engineer for professional services is 20 pages.
Right.
She is actually referring to the engineer service, which is an exhibit to the agreement on page one and two of the engineer services exhibit.
Right. So if you start at the beginning and you go to page 20 and you turn that page over, then you'll get to the page that Commissioner Gilreath is on. And there you go.
And, and it's an elementary question. Somewhere in this document I read that we're talking about two, 12,500 lineal feet. And, and I, and I guess that's what the distance is. But I was just curious, where's the location, the exact location of what we're referring to?
Okay. Well, we have a-
Name or something.
We have a number of, uh, areas that the sewer and water are going to be completed on. And Cindy, if you can let me share my screen, I can pull that up.
You should be able to now.
All right. Let me pull that up. And, um, if y'all can now see my screen, which is a bit hard to read, um, what you can see here in the legend is there is a red for Wooton Company up here at the top. You'll see the red line. So if you look throughout the city of Oxford, you can see that there is some red lines up here behind Pine Cone Drive that are adjacent to the Masonic Home. There are also some down here at, uh, near the old Burlington Mills, uh, starting at Lewis Street going back towards Industry Drive. There's another line that is starting at Lewis Street going back, Green Forest Drive adjacent to the railroad, going over in the vicinity of Industry Drive near Certain Key, Bandag, Ideal Fastener. We have another little section over off of the outer loop near Fairview, uh, Fairway Drive. Um, let me look. We did some of the others, uh, previously on part of the project that's going on currently. So those are the primary areas for that 12,500 feet of, uh, of sewer. Does that help you out?
Oh, it does. I, I, I was wondering if it was one continuous or, but I had no earthly idea. It was all over the place.
That I, I have this map that I can email to you that shows the different areas. And I think we've shared those at a number of Public Works Committee meetings, possibly prior to, uh, your joining us, but laying out, you know, where McGill was doing design of proposed sewer projects or water projects, where Wooton was doing proposed water and sewer. So that, that's a map that I can share with you to have for reference if you'd like.
I, I would, but you have shared this when, when, when I came in to talk with you, but I had no idea that's what this was referring to.
Okay.
Okay, so, wow.
Would it help? I have found on occasion for maps like this, that it is really helpful to have it printed on an 11 by 14 sheet. Commissioner, would that help if Cindy or Alyssa, uh, did that for you and actually any other board member? I mean, I, it certainly can make a difference when you can have it printed on a little bit bigger sheet and you can just, exactly the way that Amy has enlarged it here, um, I just throw that out there. I've been very grateful when I've gotten my blown up versions of-
And that may help. The, the other question I would have though is how much of this have we already completed? All the colored stuff or?
Okay, the project that we have almost completed, we have a few stray items left, are the blue lines here. All, all of this darker blue has been put in. Um, much of the pink, uh, area, uh, has been put in or some of that was shifted to the, um, included in the sewer project that you were just asking about. You saw there was about 6,000 feet of sewer, or water. So some of the pink, uh, streets were not able to be completed due to our funding issues. The, um, lines that are in this green right here have been started. And, uh, so the, the construction is going on, on those, uh, right now or is about to begin. It was split into two construction projects. One of them is actively under construction. If you've gone across Industry Drive, you may have noticed, uh, be, after the car wash, you've noticed maybe a lot of construction equipment, uh, and, uh, clearing in that vicinity. So they're laying up towards the Burlington Mills and, uh, old Burlington Mills and out to Lewis Street. They came all the way from the interstate. Most of us don't notice that work back in there. Um, I'm not sure. I'd have to look at the schedule where they're moving next. The contractor that received the project, um, second part of that project is actually having problem getting PVC pipe with COVID. And they would have started construction by now, except they cannot get the pipe. And so we have delayed that project. Um, but we, we don't have a choice. They don't have any pipe to put in the ground. So that one is under, you know, it, it has been bid. The contractor's working on getting pipe. Um, the next project that we will actually be bidding is the, the darker green or darker brown here and then the lighter green. So those are two projects that we have been waiting, I think, with, it's been discussed in a couple of meetings that DOT held up the encroachments on those for about eight or nine months. That includes the College Street project. And so now that we have gotten encroachments from them, we would go out for bid. But now that we are considering putting a median on College Street, we are looking at, uh, a slight delay on putting that out for bid. But all those projects are, most of the design is complete, other than the changes that we are currently making due to trying to marry them up with the resurfacing project or the downtown master plan or the conditions of the encroachment that encouraged us to look at the option of the median on College Street. And, and then it kind of snowballed from there.
Thank you.
And I will ask, um, Commissioner Gilreath, did we get to your question about the railroad and the railroad crossings and why that's in there?
Well, I thought it was close to the location of the street that we were talking about.
Yep. Well, uh, we have to cross the railroad in their right of way. And if you've ever had to deal with the railroad, they're, they're not the most pleasant people, um, to deal with as far as an, an entity. They have a tendency to stonewall and take forever. So as part of the contract, essentially the engineering firm will be dealing with the, uh, railroad in order to obtain the necessary permits for railroad crossings for utilities. And, and that is why that is in that, um, agreement or in that section of their services that they perform.
And that's at the Chris Tex and Baghdad and that location?
Yeah, where Amy's got her hand on, on the map.
Okay, good. Okay, I'm, I'm following it. Thank you.
And, and this is a reminder, this is the area where we are also going through the Superfund site, which also caused a delay on that project dealing with the EPA and their requirements and working through the work plan required by them. So it's had, uh, some, some hiccups and slowdowns due to that.
Yep. And if you look at that in the red out there where Amy's hand is, you're, you're crossing the railroad twice.
Right. I used to live there on Ward Boulevard. I know that area very well.
We're looking at putting some new, yeah, we're looking at putting some new water down Ward Avenue as part of another project.
Excellent. Are we, are you, are you set, Commissioner?
I, I, I understand. I mean, I'm following it a lot better.
Okay. And just so that you know, then that's why I was confused and making it more confusing. I apologize. But on page one of this entire attachment, um, so 20 pages before the reference that you pointed out, that's where in that top paragraph is the reference for the 12,500 linear feet of sewer line with addition, what Amy mentioned, the 6,500 feet of water line. So just, just to clear up where, where you-
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry.
Nope. Not, not a problem.
I just wanted to know where that, 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 that foot, where those feet were.
Right. There's, there's a lot of area we're covering, as you could tell by the mention.
And then the agreement's confusing along with the, all the attachments. There's about eight different page ones throughout all of that information there attached to that USDA project and the Wooton Company, an engineering firm.
Yeah. Well, we, we appreciate, never, never hesitate to ask your questions. And thank you, Amy, for being so Johnny on the spot with your map and bringing that up and making it large enough for everybody to be able to see what was going on. We, we appreciate that. So are we set, Commissioner, to move on to item G? Anybody else have any other questions on this item? Okay. So we're gonna move forward to item G, consider adopting a resolution to accept a USDA rural development loan and grant offer and capital project ordinance for the 2017 USDA RD Water and Sewer Improvements Contract, uh, Project Contract Two. And so we are going, obviously what's in red should be in black by next week as we get final numbers from Amy. Is there, are there any questions or anything further that you would like to say, Amy, about this?
I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Nobody have any questions? Then we move forward to the consent agenda to reappoint Willie S. Darby to the Housing Authority by request of Xavier Wertham and accept the October Finance Report by our Finance Director, Hock Ang. And Hock, congratulations on getting the Cafford Award. I'm not sure when I read that earlier if I realized you were on. So I apologize for that, but great job. Thank you very much. And proving the minutes. Does anybody have anything about any of this? Okay. Well, with that, um, I'm gonna check and see if anybody has anything to add. We'll start with our Mayor Pro Tem. Do you have anything that you want to add or bring up? Oh, yes, Amy. Let's, let's start.
I, I do apologize. I should have mentioned with the USDA grant and loan, um, project, uh, the USDA will be coming in to present their letter of conditions. If you recall, several years ago, they did do that presentation. Uh, they have been invited to the meeting, but they have to formally go through the letter with the board for, um, making sure that the board understands the conditions. And as soon as they provide that letter to me with the final numbers, I will get that to Cindy to distribute.
So thank you, Amy. Will they present that during that item or will they present it during the delegations portion of the agenda?
Yeah, I would suggest we let them do the presentation at the beginning of the meeting so they don't need to, uh, join us for the entire meeting.
Okay. So Cindy will add that as a delegation E or item E under that. Okay. All right. Excellent. Thank you for bringing that up. Anything else on that item?
I, I think that will do it. Uh, I'm, I'm hopeful that our, our grant and loan numbers will change a little bit, a little bit more positive on the grant side. But, uh, when, when we get the numbers, final numbers, we'll let you know.
Okay. Well, we're, we're happy for the amount of grant money we've already gotten. We really appreciate your work on this. Um, okay. So now I switch back over. Mayor Pro Tem, is there anything that you would like to bring up or add?
No, ma'am. You all have a pleasant evening.
Well, it is really nice to see you, sir.
Thank you.
It's been a while. Good to see you.
You too.
Right. Thank you. Uh, going to my right, uh, Commissioner Gilreath?
No, nothing. Thank you.
Okay. And to her right, Commissioner Bullock?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Bridges?
Uh, yeah, I wanted to ask, um, Ms. Cheek when, um, she will be getting back with us relative to the recreational master plan. I know that there were some questions about, um, what was planned. And I didn't want too much time to go by before we hear from her again.
Yes, sir. Um, we hope to bring that at the latest. It would be the December agenda. So we should have that information to you next month.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Anything else, Commissioner?
No.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Fields?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Curran?
Uh, just to remind everybody, the Rip and Cut tomorrow at the, um, um, Decorating Center that's opening. And also congratulations to Ms. Hart.
Yes.
For her, um-
Yes.
Re-elected president of the, I'm reading it, North Carolina Association of Zoning.
Yep.
Oh, I didn't. What is this? I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure I saw this.
You're worried you haven't read the newsletter.
No, I've been making, uh, calls to tell people to go vote. Read my newsletter. Ms. Hart, you are featured in our newsletter.
Yes.
Wow.
Hereby to be referred to as El Presidente.
I'm, I'm sorry. What did you say, Ron?
Her new title is El Presidente.
Yes, it is.
Yep.
So she's president of the North Carolina Association of Zoning Professionals?
Yes.
Wow. Congratulations, girl. Boy, bring, bring pride to the city of Oxford. Congratulations. That's awesome. Thank you so much for bringing that up, Commissioner.
That's all I have.
Okay. Awesome. And Commissioner Toby?
No, I think Danny got it for me. I wanted to congratulate Cheryl. I did read the newsletter. So.
I did too.
So I'm in the doghouse. Okay. Well.
No, Jackie, I, I haven't had time to read it either.
Oh.
The engineering packet.
Yeah. Yeah, there you go. How many people? Well, of course, I didn't read the engineering packet either. So.
I'll just read what I can understand.
Thank you, Danny. Thank you, Danny. I got lost.
I think Teresa knocked us all out with that one. Um, so wonderful. Let me make sure. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. I got everybody. Um.
Did you get Ron?
Yes, I did. I got him before. I got Kwan. And so do we have anything from our manager that you need to answer or add?
No, just, um, you know, go out and vote if you haven't done so already. And, uh, you know, we'll of course be out there, uh, we'll be a presence without being a presence or being oppressive, and put it that way. Uh, I think fortunately for us, you know, one of the polling places is the Police Department, which will probably, uh, hopefully keep a lid on any, any, I'm not gonna get too colorful with words, but, um, hopefully it'll be nice and smooth tomorrow. It looks like it's gonna be a nice, pretty day. So everybody who hasn't voted can get out there and do so and just do so, you know, intelligently and with good common sense and do your democratic duty. And we'll see what happens. Other than that, that's about all I've got. I want to thank everybody for, um, you know, their, their indulgement with us. I know a lot of the items are still in red, but, um, we are working diligently through that information to get it ready and prepared, uh, for next Tuesday night. So a lot of stuff going on, as you could imagine. A lot of it is indicative, again, of the amount of balls that we constantly have in the air and are continuing to juggle on a daily basis. So we, we appreciate, you know, you, you working with us to the best of your ability. And I will say that Commissioner Gilreath gets the award, the gold star this evening for approving that she actually read the agenda packet and delved into a lot of that engineering, that services agreement information. A lot of that stuff is, uh, you know, kind of gets, getting into the realm of legalese. So kudos. Somebody's paying attention. We appreciate that. Keeping us all straight.
Absolutely. Yes. And I see that Commissioner Fields has a question and then I'll circle back around to anybody else. Yes, Pat?
If in the event anybody that's, um, voting at Public Works tomorrow and the lines-
If in the event, anybody that's voting at Public Works tomorrow, and the lines do get long, have to use the restroom, I will have, they will be able to use them at the church. I will have the doors open. I know that happens. I'm, I'm hoping that there are no long lines, that most of our citizens have already voted early, but in the event, as the word is, if anybody have to have access to restrooms, Penn Avenue will be opened.
That's very gracious. Yep, awesome, thank you. Tom Burnett, do you have anything that you need to add?
No ma'am, I don't.
Okay, well, we're glad to see you, and we hope you continue to feel better. That, that is a fervent prayer on all our parts.
Thank you very much.
You, you bet. And lastly, Mary, you've got a lot of things that you have planned, that you all can go to the front page of your agenda packet. In addition, thankfully, Danny reminded us about the ribbon cutting, but do you want to say anything about everything that you've got planned for downtown Oxford?
Well, we sold out our ladies' night, which we're pretty excited about that this Thursday. We know that we'll have at least 28 women downtown. I've been getting calls all Friday and today about other people wanting to participate. We'll have family fun night, so we'll have movie, The Grinch, it'll be outside. And then, of course, Parks and Rec is doing their classic car cruise-in on Saturday. And of course, we've got Veterans Day stuff on the 11th, so. And look forward to a reverse Christmas parade. I hope that all of our commissioners will participate. We'll get you a little space on the street for you to wave to the crowd. So if you have any questions about that, definitely give me a call, but please mark that for your, on your calendar for the evening of December the 4th.
Oh, so it will be at night again?
Yes, we're gonna start a little bit earlier. We're gonna start at 6:30. We'll have a few floats, and we're gonna keep our fingers crossed that this happens like it's supposed to. Like I have it visioned.
So, so those of us on the board, so we don't need a vehicle because it's gonna be everybody else that's gonna be in the vehicle?
That is correct. You on the side of the road, you can bring a lawn chair or what, bundle up, but we're gonna have you in the street as our city commissioners. And we can put you on a, on a golf cart if you'd like, but you're just gonna sit there. You're not gonna move.
Okay, so maybe bring a battery pack of lights so people can see us, or something?
Something, yeah.
Or a candle.
We're hoping that the, the lights from the cars as they move through.
And why is it called a reverse Christmas parade? Help me.
Because the cars are moving.
Yeah, the cars, the people are moving, the parade itself is stationary, but it's in reverse order.
Oh, it's in reverse order, so I think we, we all need a little more explanation. You've got the floor.
So when you come down the street, the police officers will be first, but they're gonna be facing you instead of pulling through the, instead of driving through. They'll be stationary, but they're gonna be facing you as you go through this way.
So where is it gonna start?
So it'll start at Lenore or.
Lanier?
Is that right? Lanier, sorry. Lanier and McClanahan is where the parade will start. It'll go into Ortho, Emerge Ortho parking lot, and then come out, and you'll go to the right, and it'll go, continue down McClanahan. We think to College, maybe to Broad, depending on how many people, how many parade participants we have. We've got eighteen, nineteen right now.
Floats.
Well, we've got two floats, and then we've got other decorated cars or decorated scenes, that sort of thing. Cause our theme is Oxford Whoville Christmas, or Holiday. Oxford Whoville Holiday is the theme.
Okay, so does the board need to take that theme to heart?
Yes. Well, sure, if you want to, we want you to, yes.
Okay, so do we need to try to be out there recruiting, you know, talking it up to people that we know in terms of trying to get people to be afloat or whatever, or, or you've communicated, I mean, obviously you have an endless list of, of people have participated in the past, but do you need anything from us?
No, certainly share with your, your circle, your sphere of influence. Applications are still being taken until December the 1st.
Okay, excellent. Super. So anybody have any other questions? Because Mary is certainly the one with a lot hopping as well. Yes ma'am, Ms. Cindy.
Just wanted, my stuff is easier than Mary's. Our second annual food drive is ongoing, so if you haven't donated, please do so. And do not forget the employee appreciation luncheon, November the 24th. It's on your next agenda, as a reminder.
24th or?
November 24th. It's a Tuesday.
Okay, um, so I.
To go. We will have plates ready. People will come and get their plate and go wherever. Because of COVID, we can't sit down and share the meal as we normally would.
Okay, thank you very much.
So that's our two big things, and our first annual toy drive will be starting December the 1st. I think December 1st.
And how do you decide? So you're gonna, how are you gonna just decide where to distribute the toys?
We will get names from social services of families that are in need for their children. And the same with the food drive. We, we will get names of needy families.
Okay, great. Wonderful, thank you. Does anybody else have anything else to add? Okay, well, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, yes, yes Teresa.
Are, are we making a donation to ACIM, or was it just, or is this just for a family? The food drive?
This food drive is just for families. We get a, a variety, we get an elderly person, we get a family with children. Hopefully, we can get enough food for four families this year. We did three families last year, and we're hoping to extend it to four families this year. And we get the names from social services.
If somebody wants to give you money instead of food, because we keep forgetting when we go to the store, can you turn that into food?
We will, we will, Alyssa or I will go out and buy as much food with the money we're given as possible. We did that last year, too.
Okay, great, thank you. Anything else? All righty then, now I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
That was Commissioner Ron Bullock made the motion. Okay, as you know, instead of saying vote with your feet, I still have to do a roll call vote. I'm gonna start to my right, Commissioner Gilreath.
Adjourn, um, yes. But what are we supposed to be doing right now?
That's what we're doing, we're agreeing to adjourn. So we got one, Commissioner Bullock.
Yes.
Commissioner Bridges.
Yes.
Commissioner Fields.
Yes.
Commissioner Curran.
Yes.
And Commissioner Toby.
Oh, yes, please.
Okay, and I think Mayor Pro Tem Harris exited some time ago. So with that, we stand adjourned, and I say, stay warm and safe everybody, and.
Good night.
Wonderful evening, and, and may you feel happy and fulfilled tomorrow on Election Day.
Good night.
I'm glad everybody enjoyed the meeting tonight.
Thank you Teresa.
Yes, absolutely. Thanks for all those great questions.